Mayor Grunder.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Bloodsworth.
Here.
Commissioner Howell.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
And we will have our invocation tonight by Marshall Rawson. And after that, we will stand for the pledge.
You can come to the podium right there.
I don't need, I usually don't need a mic, Commissioner, but thank you, Lord, for this day, for your grace and your mercy, Lord. May we have a productive meeting tonight. May we honor and glorify you and all decisions that we make and come to your terms and your will and all things. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Rawson. Okay, we'll go through approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We'll do approval of the consent agenda, minutes of the June 12, 2025 budget workshop and the commission meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We're properly moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Move on to E, special presentations, presentation of the fiscal year 23 audit.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Brendan McKittrick. I'm a director with James Moore and Company. Appreciate the opportunity to present to you all tonight. We are presenting the fiscal year 2023 audit for the city of High Springs. I did want to address the fact that, as you all are aware, we are late with the audit. As you may or may not be aware, we had significant challenges in receiving kind of the numbers we need to start the audit. Essentially what happens with the audit process, we get the numbers and then we validate those numbers. Our understanding and kind of working with Diane and her staff is there was significant challenges specifically in your accounting, GL software, really created by kind of the previous staff, and changes in the chart of accounts, as well as changes in creation of new funds, and also changes kind of in the back end, which created a significant amount of issues. And to give you a little context here, I think there was over 300 transactions that had to be corrected just to get ready for the audit. Generally what we tell clients is best case scenario is we'll get through an audit four to six weeks. So we got our audit, or the trial balance or the numbers April 24th, prioritized the High Springs audit, directed resources and kind of really got on it to issue June 16th. So about six to seven weeks. Just to kind of give you an idea as to how quickly we tried to turn it around for the city. You may also be interested as to what's the plan for fiscal year 2024. We have talked to Diane and Jeremy with regards to that, you know, looking at starting our procedures in mid-July. Obviously, we're already behind eight ball here, but we want to get started as quickly as we can as well. So a lot of those issues that were encountered in this year's audit have been corrected for 2023, but the hope is for 2024, again, that'll carry forward, again, correcting some of that, the coding and classification, like I said, and really kind of the messiness in the accounting software. So again, just wanted to kind of give you a little bit of ideas to kind of the challenges we had to work through for fiscal year 2023 and then moving forward to 2024. One thing I like to remind the commission is that these financial statements are your financial statements. However, there are reports as auditors were required to include in here. The first report being in the front of your financial statements where we express our opinion. We do have the same opinion we've expressed in the past and an opinion perfectly acceptable by the state of Florida. And one too that we have for other municipalities as well, and really kind of comes down to a cost benefit. Do you all want to hire an actuary to calculate a very theoretical number? At the end of the day, doesn't really impact your budgetary process or the budgetary numbers. Again, so that's one where, again, we've issued this opinion in the past, and again, this is acceptable by the state. The second report, the single audit report, so you all did have grant expenditures exceeding 750,000, so we're required to do additional procedures. You can see here, we had no issues in noncompliance specific to those procedures. And then the third report, the internal control and compliance report, this is where we're required to look at your internal controls and communicate any issues that we've identified. So the comments we have here, you can see there are six items, a lot of them having to do with, again, the messiness in the accounting and the kind of the numbers that we received. The first item being utility billing, so there was an error in the calculated utility billing rate. Again, with all of these, we have talked to Diane and staff and, you know, making sure there is a plan moving forward. There are responses in the back that you can see as well. The second item, reconciliation of account balances and audit adjustments, really having to do with those audit adjustments that we posted. So again, a lot of the cleanup that we had to do creates this comment. So again, you want clean numbers as far as when you're looking at them, as well as when we're looking at them. Timeliness of bank reconciliation. So the, for the audit, the bank reconciliation was done. However, it's really the timeliness of it. So again, the issues that we encountered with regards to the numbers created issues with the bank reconciliation. That since has been caught up, and you can see in the response in the back as well. Preparation of the, basically the grant schedule that we're required to audit, there was some assistance we needed to provide to get that to have a complete population of the grant activity. So that's the fifth comment. And then the noncompliance item has to do with budgetary compliance. So essentially, there's two departments within the general fund that were over expended compared to the budget. So it does trigger this comment for us to communicate that. The fourth report, the Chapter 10 550 report, also called the management letter to the auditor general. Some more required communication in here, as well as in here, we're required to do what's called a financial condition assessment. So the state sends benchmarking information where we compare the city to other peers, as well as trends, and basically look at, hey, where are you, where do you stand compared to those peers and the trends? Essentially, if it indicates unfavorable, we would be required to communicate that to you all, and it didn't for FY 23. The next, sorry, along the same lines with the Chapter 10 550 report, there's another area where we can provide additional recommendations. Not so much areas where there's internal control issues, but just items we noted saying, hey, these are areas where we could improve from a financial accounting perspective. The first one being policies and procedures are real, really formalizing what those, you know, processes are within the accounting department. Again, hopefully to help correct some of these issues that we have. Again, you can see in the back, management does respond to these, and again, that is in process. The next item is inventory. So we did note that the inventory balance within the general ledger hadn't been adjusted. So just recommending that management look at that, at least annually, to really adjust that balance to what it is at year end. Debt compliance. So within the debt items you have for the city, there is some covenant calculations we're required to calculate. There are work, again, this is one where the calculation wasn't in compliance. So again, recommending that the city maintain and review that and make sure that you're in compliance with those debt covenant calculations. And finally, the fund classifications in recording. Again, I mentioned the kind of the messiness of the accounting that we saw. So with the change in funds that occurred over the kind of the past two years, really, there was transactions that had to be moved between funds. So again, just making sure we get that right moving forward. The last report, the examination report, just indicating that the city's in compliance with specific state statutes. And then again, I mentioned there are responses in the back to all these items as well. Some other items, just highlighting, hey, were there any changes this year with regards to accounting standards that were required to follow, which there were none? Any estimates that are included in your financial statements? So again, just letting you all know, hey, there are estimates that are included. We do look at those as part of our procedures, but just highlighting that for you to be aware of. That being your collectability of your allowance without for accounts, really the receivables on the utility funds, your depreciation, as well as the net pension liability, which is calculated by an actuary. We also highlight disclosures for you to be aware of. No changes from one year to another, but just highlighting, hey, these are what we'd consider to be disclosures you may be significant for you to look at. And then again, I mentioned the work we had to do with regards to audit adjustments. So we did have adjusting entries as part of our process. So that's just highlighting those entries right there. With regards to the general fund and kind of looking at the numbers, you can see here on the fund balance, and again, your general fund's your main operating fund for the city. Just kind of looking at the last three years, and specifically year to year from 2023 to 2022, biggest change here is that ARPA, there's ARPA revenue dollars that you all received, you can see in the assigned fund balance bucket, and some of the spin down from 22 to 23. And again, you can see that fund balance also decreasing slightly as well. And then looking, the other piece we look at is we take those numbers and we compare it to expenditures and transfers. You can see what we do is we take a percentage, and really that percentage we compare to what the Government Finance Officers Association recommends, which is two months. And think of that as a floor. You don't want to be below the floor. Obviously, above it is where you want to be. And then also acknowledging, we are in Florida. We do have emergencies where there is requirements that you may have to have fund balance to pay, as well as capital projects. So if you, you know, there's an upfront cost. So again, just acknowledging, hey, we don't want to be near the floor of that two months or the 16.7%, but we want to be above it. Then looking at your business type funds, we've got the unrestricted net position, four year, three funds, really water being consistent from last year. Solid waste having a pretty significant decrease with what you can see is a deficit unrestricted fund balance, really having to do with a significant transfer to the general fund. And then your sewer fund, obviously approximately 1.4 million dollars. And there was a significant capital asset addition during the current year, which created, again, that significant decrease. And then some other items to note, special revenue fund. So this includes a variety of activity, including your local option gas tax, wild places, wild spaces, or public spaces, building department, cemetery. So again, I mentioned the change in the accounting, specifically in the software. This was all rolled up into one fund, your special revenue fund, and you can see that really kind of the deficit fund balance for what's remaining in there. The CRA, so that does have a restricted fund balance of approximately 163,000. We are required to issue a separate set of financials there. We do have one comment, similar to the general fund where there's budgetary noncompliance. So essentially, the actual expenditures were greater than the budgeted amount. So again, required to communicate that to you all. And then finally, the net pension liability, highlighting you do have a pretty significant liability included in your financial statements, but really, there's no impact on the budget piece. The impact is the contribution you're required to make every year for that because due to some of the accounting that we have to follow, that gets pushed down from the state. And again, an actuary calculates that number. But again, just wanted to highlight, there's no budgetary impact with regards to that liability. So I said a lot there. And I'd like to open up to any questions you might have.
Commissioners.
If I may, please, Mr. Mayor. So the CRA budget deficit, if I remember looking, it was 188 dollars. We spent about 188 dollars more than we had budgeted. So that's pretty close. Is that something that gives you any pause, anything that you don't see in other places? Is that unusual?
For us, it's, it's not, well, it's kind of a loaded question.
I'm just trying to see how our data set fits in with other municipalities.
The challenge is with that comment specifically, is you can create a budget, and if we have audit adjustments that are significant, which we had, that will sometimes push those expenditures greater. So we do see it enough as part of our procedures, again, especially as we're performing audit procedures and having a post audit adjustments. It's not uncommon, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not an accountant, so I'm trying. We've sat together before, and you try to explain this stuff to me, and it just doesn't make as much sense. But in terms of the progress that we're making, all of the accounting and the changes in the accounting that were made on the back end before our finance director and city manager were here, that was stuff that happened a while ago. Do you feel like we've made substantial recovery from that at this point?
So we were, so to speak, dead in the water for a while there, where we didn't have numbers. So that's what kept pushing us, because essentially, we can't start our audit procedures. The fact that we got numbers that we were able to audit was a huge step in the right direction.
Right.
And again, as part of this process, obviously, we don't like, I don't like being here telling you that we're late, right? So we have active conversations, saying, hey, 23, let's get through this. What's 24 going to look like? Do you feel good about it? So I don't have the numbers right now, but everything's trending in the right direction, I would say.
Right, right.
We have positive momentum. Again, we're allocating resources to make sure we're able to kind of jump on this. We did it for 23. We want to do that for 24. Obviously, we want to rightsize this as well. So I do think we're trending in the right direction, yes.
I mean, certainly some of the delay would have to have been that we didn't have a finance director for three months, and there was nothing we could do. So we were just waiting, and now we're in catch-up mode. But I feel like we're really, we're getting to where we need to be.
Yeah, it's hard to articulate how messy the accounting numbers were.
Yeah.
I mean, there was a major lift on Diane and staff to get them to a workable set of numbers where we could even start the audit.
Right.
I mean, even with that, we had an audit adjustments. But yes, we're trending in the right direction.
So if we're starting in the middle of July, that's also going to be budget season and a lot of other things. Do we anticipate that we could have an audit for 24? And I know this is putting a lot of guesswork in, but would we be able to have an audit completed before the end of this year, or is it maybe first part of next year recently?
I don't have a crystal ball, but like I said, if we have good numbers and we're able to schedule it, four to six week, best case scenario. Obviously, if we get the numbers and we've got to make adjustments, I don't see that as something that we can't get to as far as getting it issued before the end of the year. But again, it's hard because I don't, you know, we're still working, we're trying to wrap 23 up. I haven't looked at 24 yet, but that would be the goal.
So from a state compliance standpoint for 23, we're in good shape?
Everything's been submitted.
So no red flags there, and we are, we're finished with 23. Great. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I think one of the questions I had was more probably for Diane at this point. The messiness between funds, have we fixed that issue? And have we put anything in place to make sure that the practices that, I don't know that was before you, but the practices that were there before are not repeated?
Yes, yes. And we actually have several policies written now that address all of the issues we've talked about. It's hard because we've had two cycles, almost a whole cycle since 23. So we've made a lot of changes. So it's kind of hard because like, oh, we have to fix those things. It's just at that time, they weren't fixed. But yes, we've written several policies to make sure that we have standards in place, to make sure that doesn't happen. And a lot of it is in the coding and the system. We've had to make a lot of changes to make everything float together properly, because we had a period of time where changes had begun, and then the people that were working on that left. And so it was kind of half done, and we, but then we still had to keep operating. So you kind of have to still post the messiness, because you got to post, you've got to keep going, and then you have to kind of clean it up on the back end. So that was part of it, and that's why we got a consultant. We just, our department is three people, and they're not dedicated to doing accounting. So that made a huge difference this year by having the consultants there. So we had someone who could manipulate large volumes of data and designate their time strictly to that and not have daily operations to do too. So that was a huge help. So we have made changes going forward, and yes, we're already working on 24. And when we finish 24, we'll be ready to start 25. The fiscal year will be ending, so.
So were we able to pinpoint why the general fund was exceeded almost 1.2 million?
As Brendan alluded to, it exceeded budget. It doesn't mean it exceeded funds. So when you look at the fund balance, it's a couple of things. We have the, and again, looking at the end of 23 in a snapshot, we have the ARPA funds in there, we have the emergency fund of the 800,000 plus our probably, I don't know, 400,000 or so of regular general fund balance. So that is after the fact. You know, the budget was exceeded, but we still have those funds in place. And it gets a little confusing because fund balance isn't always your cash balance, especially like in the utilities, all your assets are in there. They're included in part of that. So it makes it sound like, oh, you have $30,000 worth of fund balance. Well, it's, most of it's assets in the utilities. There's not much of that that's cash. But that's what makes up the general fund cash, what I described.
Any other questions?
I'm good.
Okay, we'll open it up for a public comment.
I do want to thank Brendan and his team. They have bent over backwards to help us, to get us where we need to be. They are the ones that helped us find a consultant who has been amazing. So we certainly could not have done it without their patience and support along the way.
Yeah, James Moore's been a great partner to us. Thank you for that.
Hundred percent.
Okay, without that, we'll accept a, I'll accept a motion to accept the audit or not? Accept the audit report?
Presentation.
Oh, just a presentation. Well, then I guess we accept it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Test your presentation and accept. Even better. We didn't have to go so soon. All right, we'll move on from special presentations, and we will do unfit as business, discuss on options for the alcohol ordinance. And I think, before we even start on this, I'd like to just say one thing about it. I think we have beat this thing to death over and over and over again. So, you know what, I'm not going to say it. I was going to say something, had something prepared, but we have. We beat this thing to death over and over and over again. And I think for the citizens' sake and our sakes as commissioners, because I know, I didn't know what was going to happen at the joint meeting, no matter what people say. But it was, I was blindsided by that. I know our city manager was as well, and him and I've had that conversation. So, you know, I'll just ask everybody on this one. It's a very touchy topic for us. Just be respectful to everybody during their time, and we'll move through it.
Mr. Mayor.
Ma'am.
If I may.
Please.
I know that this came back on the agenda per your direction at that county meeting, but also candidly, it's on here from the city attorney's office as well. We want to provide you all with something or nothing. In whatever direction you all want to go, I think there has been, to Mayor Grunder's point, a lot of discussion about a lot of different options. In your packet tonight is the ordinance as it presently sits. Is there a way to put the map that was also included in the packet up on the screen, please? We, we obviously want to support you all in whatever direction or lack thereof that you want to go in. We just, we need some definitive direction. So one of the other things we went ahead and did tonight was put together, and I say we, it was not me, it was Angela and Christie, and they really deserve the credit there. But one of the things that staff did was they put together an aerial map of your central downtown area. And one of the things that you need to keep in mind when we're talking about putting in places that derive 51% or more of their sales from alcohol sales and not food, is that they can't be within 500 feet of a church. Man, that's a long packet tonight. They can't be within 500 feet of a church. I think they've, I'm almost positive that they've got to be in commercial zoning. That's a Christie expertise point more than it is a me expertise point. And I know that we were, you all were kind of tossing around the idea of, you know, do we put provisions into place about they can only be within X number of feet of each other? Obviously, the ones that exist right now, I'd be grandfathered into that concept. But I really want you to kind of see that you, the church situation in High Springs really does limit where new places can go in. And then that's a longstanding ordinance, and it's not uncommon at all. Almost every city has that rule about how close a predominantly alcohol sale establishment can be within a church. So really, the city attorney's office tonight is seeking some guidance. Do you want to leave the ordinance as it is? Do you, my understanding is that there's a petition floating around out there. Staff went ahead and put together guidelines for you all for your ordinance in regards to citizen initiatives and how that works. They put in the deadlines of when those 10% of elector signatures are necessary to be presented to the supervisor of elections. So that petition out there exists. So I don't know if there's a world in which you all want to leave it to that petition and have it go to the, and I say have it go to the electorate. It would have to come to you all as an ordinance first, given how it's been. I don't know what you guys would vote. I'd never ask you ahead of time. But if you decided not to move forward with the ordinance, you'd pass a resolution putting it on the ballot, at which point your electorate at large would be the decision maker of whether or not the ordinance that the petition is proposing would be enacted into law. We can present you with an ordinance that changes the regulations as to those businesses. So, and I know that there's also been some idea, and I haven't done enough research to speak ad nauseam about it this evening, but do we create a special zoning category, a use category? So your options are really, you got a lot of them, which is kind of why I think your staff, candidly, and the city attorney's office, we're not really sure which direction to run. So if there could be some direction tonight, we would be much obliged. We just want to get in front of you what you want, or nothing. If you want to leave it to the petition, we just, we just need to know what you guys want to do.
Guess we'll open it up for public comment.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to flag, because public comment obviously may be voluminous on this. If you have a motion, you're going to have to have another public comment.
Never mind, it's not open for public comment.
So it may be wise to make your motion, or we, or we just move, or if you tell me we're going to move on from the item because you guys are going to let it sit, and you want to allow public comment then, I think that's completely fine.
Are we having a motion or a discussion item?
You can, you, I just need, my mic request is that you make a motion with some guidance for staff in the city attorney's office tonight on where you guys, do you want me to come back with research on something, you know, any direction whatsoever. We're happy to run in that way.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I have some questions. Would it be more productive for us to have a conversation before opening up the public comment? Because that may help.
It may help you get to a motion.
Whatever the motion may or may not be.
I think that that would be a fair course of action, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, please. No, I mean, I was hoping we would have a discussion. You know, maybe not a, a long one, but maybe just something to kind of get where everybody's at with it. And I think we know where everybody's at with it, right? That's an assumption I'm making based on previous votes.
I'll start, because we got to start somewhere, right? You know, there's, there's other cities, of course, that have ordinances in place. And my main goal here is to support our local businesses. There is a phrase, and I'm, I'm sure somebody from the brewery can help me out, but if there's something that we can do in the wording of the ordinance of manufacturing your own product on premises, maybe would help us move this forward and allow for them to be open on Sundays and keep a tap room or something that people just import or, you know, bring in beers from all over, you know, out of the downtown area. So maybe that's something that we could look at. You know, that, again, that basically gives our local business the ability to open up on Sunday. So I don't know.
I had, I had a similar question or comment that kind of is in relation to that, that you might be able to answer, Danielle. Mr. Mayor, you may, may know, I know that after the joint meeting that we had, I met with a couple of commissioners, county commissioners, just to have a conversation with them about this and some other issues. But I did a public records request to find out, because Commissioner Cornell said, well, we've heard from, you know, a lot of the constituents. And I did a public records request to find out, you know, just what that was. And it was, it came back with two people. One is a local business owner. And that local business owner had a question that kind of goes into what you were saying. It says, as a business across the street from the brewery, I'd like to sell their products, but I can't due to current distribution restrictions. How do we address that? I mean, I know that's kind of a uniquely different issue, but is that a zoning category? Is that something that we could?
See, that's a, that's a law. I think it's a state statute. So
So, let's see if I can explain this the best. So, if I own a bar downtown and I'm gonna sell Bud Light, I can't go to Budweiser and buy that product directly from Budweiser and sell it in my bar. It has to come through a distributor. So essentially, I buy, so Chad's the distributor, he will go buy the beer from Budweiser and then mark it up and sell it to me. Um, that's, it's just required to go through a distributor. So that's what that is.
So that's a completely independent part of this whole business model, because, I mean, if all of the local folks could have High Springs Brewing Beer, that would be a win-win for everybody. And is it because, so you'd have to have a third party? You'd have to have a middleman there to be able to distribute?
So like, the High Springs Brewery could not bottle up their beer and sell it at the watershed? It would have to go through a third party.
Yeah.
So they cannot be a manufacturer and a distributor at the same time?
No. Not in the state of Florida. If I'm, am I wrong?
I don't know. I don't know if they can get the distributor's license, I don't know.
Two different business licenses?
I got you.
That's right, yeah, that's right.
So you can manufacture?
And distribute, but then you can't serve or sell. Okay.
Okay, that, I just, that was kind of, so there's no, there's no path forward there for the local guys unless there's a third party, somebody in the middle, picking it up from the brewery and driving it across the street.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's nothing that we can do anything about in terms of zoning or the LDC, because a lot of what I'm looking at here, for me, rolls up to the LDC that we're gonna be working on here in the next year or so. That gives us the opportunity to address a lot of things. Um, the distance from churches potentially. Um, I didn't realize that that was as common. I really didn't. I thought that was kind of a, a High Springs thing.
In small towns. I mean, don't get me wrong, you go to Orlando and there's like, I don't think they care. But, small towns, it's not uncommon at all, and it dates back well beyond any of us sitting here today.
Okay. Um, because using the map that you guys put in the packet, um, our, our current ordinance says five hundred feet, and, uh, that's an ordinance we need to look at, because I don't think we got five hundred feet. That's an important ordinance for a look at, because I think it's less than five hundred feet from St. Bart's to their front door.
To solve some, some of these, I don't wanna say minor, because they're major, but some of these issues, like what Commissioner Howell just brought up, and what you're bringing up, can be addressed when, because we're gonna do a complete land development code rewrite. So in that rewrite, if you so choose, you can make a separate category for brewery.
Right.
And give them their own set of rules. The issue I, I personally have with that, and not to get into the politics of it, is that's gonna be a long process. And that's gonna, so if you decide that you will, under the LDC will allow them to be open on Sundays, it could take, well, almost a year before that LDC is completely rewritten and improved by you. I don't, I think that's a, a path forward. I don't think that's the most efficient and timely in this path forward, but it is very well an option.
Well, I think that should be something that we consider regardless. You know, I mean, because here, here's, you know, the, the whole data side of me. Chief Shepherd has maintained for years, there's no issue. He doesn't have issues with law and order, he doesn't have issues with DUI. That's important to me.
With the brew, with, with the brewery?
Yeah, it's important data, so.
Since our meeting wasn't televised, the joint meeting, I wanted to bring up a key fact, is since I, um, was given the authority to issue special, special permits for the brewery to be open on Sunday, under the guidance which you guys have allowed me, we have given them a number of permits to be open on Sunday. Every Monday following, I called either Chief Shepherd or Lieutenant Taylor. Do we have any DUIs? Do we have any alcohol-related or noise ordinance? And there has not been one.
Mm-hmm.
So that's.
Well, I definitely have interest in, in rolling this up into the big picture in terms of the LDC going forward. Um, because I think that we've got enough data to, to, to recognize that a brewery is not a bar, and it is a different scenario. And I think that in terms of the ordinance as it's worded here, I, I absolutely agree nobody is looking at the fifty-one percent. Nobody's getting into all these businesses' drawers. And there is no, nobody is doing that. I don't want to do that. I have no interest in doing that. So, that verbiage, however, in the ordinance, way predates any of us up here. So when we made updates last year, at least from my perspective, we were trying to modify the ordinance to benefit the brewery. To take, you know, leave the restaurants alone, doing it specifically to help the brewery. Um, and we've gotten one, I think, permit application in the last year, and it was for the Saturday opening for the, um, the car show. Um, and that was different, different restrictions, not a Sunday thing, but having, having containers open beyond the borders. And that passed five to zero. So I think that, you know, that you followed the path and it was well received, in my opinion. Um, but what I'm not sure is, is when we, when we made the updates to the ordinance last year, you know, there's specific language in there, that if it's not in conjunction with a national holiday or a citywide event that is approved by the city manager administratively, that you can submit a special permit for a time period not exceeding forty-eight hours. So Sundays are still twenty-four, so we're good there. And the applications may include multiple future events in one application. And I'm not sure why that path hasn't been utilized. I think that, you know, in the last year, that's been a legal option. Since June of last year, that's been an option, but it hasn't been, been pursued, and I don't, I don't know why. Um, I think that if that had been used in the last year, that would have gone a long way to, you know, community-oriented, you know, your neighbors understand, really, maybe this isn't a big impact to them. I think that that would have, could have gone a long way. Um, and I think that being open on Sundays, in terms of the, um, petition that, that is circulating, I think if you're open on Sundays, that's gonna give that a whole lot better chance of success. If you can get, you know, getting that across the finish line, I think the number that you have to get is around six hundred, I think, give or take, so that, you know, in case some are rejected, which they're gonna be, supervisor election is gonna reject some of them. That's, you got six months to do that, that's about a hundred a month. I think if you're open on Sundays, it's, gives you a better path to that goal. Um, so, I, I'm not sure, and, you know, only the, the brewery folks could tell us why they haven't done that. I don't, I don't know why. Um, but I went ahead and filled out a permit application for you. Got it started. Um, I haven't been able to finish it, because there's some specific stuff on here, COIs and site plans and whatnot. I sent it to the city manager so that he could forward on to whoever was the staff member that you guys would normally deal with. Um, and I made up a spreadsheet of Sundays from August to the end of the year. There's nothing in this language that doesn't say, well, we're gonna submit application for five months, here you go. I, I mean, am I wrong, Danielle? Am I, am I misunderstanding the, the verbiage here?
No, I, I think when we, and I am tapping into my memory here, because it was about a year ago, when we wrote the additional language into the ordinance, E-5 was specifically designed to permit that as a possibility. Because we, we, I think at the time, our office's counsel to the commission was, it is a lot to submit an application every Sunday, so maybe you could make it easier by allowing them to do it all at once. So yes, E-5 specifically permits that.
Well, this took me about fifteen minutes. And again, it's not complete, because I don't have all the specific information. But, um, I think that this path, first of all, I think would, would help with the petition process. Um, and, you know, gives you an opportunity to make hay in the summer days. And, you know, I mean, I made up events on Sundays. Obviously, you guys could do whatever you wanted to, but, you know, I've got NFL Sundays here. Well, Jeff Connolly wants to see his Philadelphia Eagles play, and if the Connolly clan comes, you know, half your tables are gonna be full, so that's a win-win too. Um, so, you know, I mean, a hundred signatures a month? I think that's an achievable goal. I don't know where you guys are in that path now, but, you know, if you're already at two hundred and fifty, great. If you're at eighty-five, well, then, you know, use the summer, long nights to, to try to push that forward, I think. Um, so, I mean, I would, would recommend that that's the path forward while the petition process is in, is in play. You know, let's get an application in. I, I, I mean, that's, that's my take on it. And, you know, I mean, I, I talked to a couple county commissioners and kind of explained to them some of the backend. And obviously, uh, one of them had a very different opinion. You should repeal it now. I don't agree. I think if we, we repeal it, then we have no protections. I think we need to make sure we're protecting ourselves before we, before we just take it off the books. Um, but, you know, they, they understood. They understood what was going on, and I, I would like to continue to work with the county commissioners in a constructive manner. And I think their involvement in this, they were pulled in by a couple of people, um, didn't, didn't serve any constructive purpose, in my opinion. They've been super supportive of us, and we need them to support us going forward because of our budget situation and a lot of other reasons. But Commissioner Alfred has been an incredible resource to us for the wastewater treatment plant, and I just want to keep moving that forward with them. Um, you know, and there's some other projects we've got potentially going on with them. So, that would be my recommendation. First of all, I'd like to do an overarching with the LDC, obviously. But given that, that does take time, there is a path forward now. Um, and I, I would like to encourage you guys to avail yourself of that opportunity while you get the signatures that you need, so we can get it on the ballot. That's, that's my take. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? I, I, I'm gonna tie on here with Commissioner White's here, because I want to leave it as it is right now, continue to keep it as the ordinance is right now today with all the special dates that they've already put on fourth path, and still have the permitting to be able to continue moving forward. With that being said, we have made and compromised since y'all came on board, because we had this conversation right here, that you knew how it was when you opened that line of business. Nobody's against your business. You knew that moving forward, and you accepted it as it is. From what I have done some research on, the food truck issue was generated through the brewery situation coming on board. I, I'm assuming, and if I'm wrong, correct me, was it when City Manager Corsi was here? When that took place? Does anybody recollect?
That was when he was here. Was it Corsi? Yeah, that was still Corsi.
And that ordinance was created in 2021 to make sure that we had food trucks there, and we knew who was coming on board on property, what kind of people we had, and everything to protect the city of High Springs as well as the brewery, depending on where these people came from and who they were. City compromised in that, okay? They wanted to be open on Sunday, we didn't want, we weren't in agreement with that here in our little tight, found, fine town. We compromised with all these other dates. We compromised with the special event application. So we have compromised with the brewery, worked with the brewery to do that. I'm not in favor of putting it on the ballot, because you have outside subdivisions that have more people than intercity locations in the older part of town of High Springs. Those are gonna outweigh, outweigh what the inner-city people that have to live down in this area may not want, because people that live downtown High Springs are not moving out to these subdivisions. These are new people coming in, may not know the history of High Springs. Back in the day, you couldn't get nothing in this town. It was dry town. Some of these people are still alive today. I don't want to stop progress in making changes. I'm open to all of it. But we still want to keep our fine little town as it is. That's what we all keep talking about up here every time we're here. High Springs, unique. We want it left that way. I'm not picking on one business. Let's get that straight right now, because I know how it's gonna happen come tomorrow morning, what's gonna come out. I'm not against the business, but it is our city ordinance. We are making compromises. We are working here. Let's leave it as it is. That's all I got to say.
I disagree with the not wanting to put it on the ballot thing. I think that everybody's vote, who votes in the city limits of High Springs has a say, and should have a say as to what goes in the city limits. They had a say as to who represents them. They chose us. We thought when they voted for us, that was a, I thought it was a pretty damn good idea. Now, I think that it should be up to them, and honestly, I don't know why we keep grabbing the third rail, putting it in our hands. I'd love to kick this thing square out to the citizens and say, what they vote on, what they decide on is completely theirs, and don't blame me, everybody voted, I had one vote. That would, to me, even politically speaking, that's the safer thing to do. And I've talked to people on both sides of the table, people that are for it and people that are against it. And they've both indicated that they would like a chance to vote and be heard as to whether or not they want it, or they don't want it. And I think that's the ultimate way you figure out what people want. I mean, that's what we do in this country. I don't know why that's not good enough for us now.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to clarify one thing. If the petition process does go through and the ordinance comes before you and you all reject it, you can't stop it from going to the ballot. I just, I just wanted to clear that up. I know we're talking about ballots, and I just want to make sure that we understand that their right pursuant to your code is if they do the requisite things and you all reject that ordinance, they have an absolute right to be.
No, I would not stop that. Yeah, absolutely. That is the American way to be able to do that.
Of course. I just wanted to clarify, I apologize.
Absolutely, I have no problem with that.
Danielle, can you tell us about repealing an ordinance? So, this particular ordinance, if it was repealed, what that all means? Because I think that we're kind of getting two different things. Because if you repeal the ordinance, all of that is cancellation with the ordinance in place, right?
So everything that, if, if you look in your packets, the ordinance that's included, I think it's 2024, 2024-03, provides you with a summation of Section 10-2 of your code. The idea of repealing an ordinance, first and foremost, would require an ordinance. You can't, you couldn't make a motion tonight to repeal Section 10-2 in your code. You could instruct me to bring back an ordinance that repeals Section 10-2 in your code, and all that would do is strike through everything in there. So it would be, if, if, it would be like, if you voted Thursday night and it's gone, Friday morning, it doesn't happen that fast, media code's not that efficient, Friday morning, that provision of your code is gone, it's like it was never there. So you lose, I, I say you lose, and I don't mean it one way or the other, but you lose the governance that you're presently provided in terms of alcohol sales times in its entirety. The, some of it is trying to understand what the goal is here. If it's to, if it's to permit them to be open on Sundays, I, I think you can cut, really what you're cutting is your, well, and, and some of it is, are we, are we just making it so breweries can be open on Sundays? Are we making it so bars can be open on Sundays? I, I think that Commissioner Howell brings up an interesting point of, is it a way to say if you manufacture product on-site for sale, then maybe that's how you distinguish as a brewery? You know, that, that is, I mean, it is fundamentally a brewery. They, they do all the brewing on-site, they deliver, you come in, you, you buy the beer that they brewed in the back room. Um, because getting rid of the, the fifty-one percent is going to be, it brings bars into the conversation. The fifty-one percent covers breweries and bars right now. Does, I know that that was long-winded, but does that answer your question?
Oh, no, yeah, that's, that's just what I want to answer, because I think, you know, repealing it means that we're gonna take that fifty-one percent. So that ain't just about the brewery, that'd be everybody else.
It's all of the times that currently are governed for alcohol sales.
That means we would default to the county's alcohol ordinance?
State. If there's a state in regards, and I don't, and I'm, I keep, off the top of my head.
We still follow the county, because the county has a county-wide alcohol ordinance. We're just stricter than the county's ordinance.
Ours is stricter than the county's ordinance? I would be interested to look at home rule on that. I, I don't know, I'm not answering one way or the other, and I can provide that information to you. I'm hesitant to say that, because I, I would be interested to see how home rule plays into that. I, I don't know that they can dictate when your businesses can and can't be open inside city limits. I'd have to look at it. I'd be happy to do that, but I'd have to look at it.
Any other discussion pieces from commissioners?
Mr. Mayor, if we need to move forward with a, with a, um, motion in order to open up for, for public comment, because I think that's important, I would make a motion that we continue supporting the brewery's effort to get their petition going. Um, I would encourage them to avail themselves of the opportunity that they could be open on any Sunday by permit application, and that, um, if they cross that ten percent threshold, then we put it to the ballot. That's kind of a three-part motion, sorry.
I think it's clear.
Okay.
Do you want your LDC?
Well, LDC I, I consider as kind of a separate conversation, but yeah, I definitely think.
It just seemed important to you, that's why I wanted to clarify.
Well, I mean, that's a bigger umbrella that I know we're gonna be working on, and that could identify, because, I mean, there's another issue, now that we've got this map, We've got an issue with a different ordinance in terms of the distance from St. Bart's.
Sure.
How do we resolve that legally to make sure that there's no hitch in anybody's giddyup? Do we need to do something there, too?
Probably.
But, that's kind of a separate.
Sure, sure, sure. I just wanted to clarify. You were talking about it, so I just want to make sure that I understand clearly where we're going.
Right.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
One second.
No second. Motion dies. Any other motions?
I'm trying to put this into words in my head. Hold on. Danielle.
Yes, sir.
I want to make a motion, basically saying what I said in the right terms, but I guess that would be striking, striking through Section E of 10.
You're trying, we are talking about the, what I was discussing about the idea of, or you brought it up.
On premises, manufactured on premises.
Of if you bring it up. Why, I would suggest you make the motion that you instruct the city attorney's office to bring back an ordinance that contemplates a carve-out for businesses that produce their product onsite.
Okay.
And then, keep in mind, it's an ordinance. You're gonna do first read, second read. So, you guys can scrap it, but it at least gives you something to put your hands on and sink your teeth into to see if that solves problems.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the city attorney to carve out an ordinance stating businesses that manufacture their own product onsite can sell alcohol on Sundays.
Do we have a motion on the floor? And the motion dies. Any other motions?
Well, I'm always good for one or two. I'll pass the gavel and I'll make a motion that we put it on the ballot and we allow the citizens to decide once and for all what they would like in their town. Tonight is the last night we can do it and it'll get on the ballot for this year. So, I think we need to, I think we need to do that for the citizens.
To your point, Mr. Mayor, am I out of order?
No, go ahead.
Just a second. I, Angela's not here, but you're saying tonight's the last night to make the ballot, but we don't have an ordinance and we gotta do the reading because for you to put it on the ballot.
I think we have enough time. As long as something is done tonight, I believe we have enough time with something else that's coming up in the agenda later on. I think we will have enough time to have the appropriate time ironed out and get a first reading and a second.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a suggested tweak?
Absolutely, please.
Perhaps revising your motion to instruct the city attorney's office to bring back the requisite documents necessary to put this question to the electorate.
You make that sound so much better than I do.
I have to earn my keep somehow?
Yes, we will do that. That would, I would like that to be my motion.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, if I may, just give some clarification. We've got the timelines that were put in here. So, you're saying independent of the petition that they've already got going?
Yes, I think we need to just, once and for all, allow everyone to just vote on it. I do. I believe that's the, that is the best way to stop having to deal with this as commissioners, stop having to rile up the community. I believe that that is the fairest way to do it and I believe that is what should happen.
Just for clarification, we still have to figure out an ordinance and then vote on it that then gets put on the ballot.
Yeah, I mean, it would come as like a packet. So, I mean, you guys have, it's not been that long since you've done your charter revisions.
Right.
Similar idea of, you know, it's gonna have what the proposed ballot language is, which is of course gotta describe adequately what changes you're proposing to the code. And then attached to that would be the code as it sits right now, as Exhibit A, for example. And then Exhibit B would be the proposed amendments to the code. So, it's, all comes as one. Thankfully, it doesn't have to be separate things. So, but it's all one ordinance for your review. I think it's an ordinance for that, for referendum vote. I'd have to triple-check, which is why I asked Mayor Grunder to phrase it as bring back the requisite documents because I can't remember which it is right now. So, but essentially, the ordinance, if it's an ordinance, would state what the question that's gonna be sent to the electorate is and then it will attach and show the changes, the proposed changes to the code.
Now, when you bring that back, are we able to have multiple options? Are we gonna just have one option?
Right now, I'm only receiving one instruction in this motion. If, if, if in discussion you say, Mayor Grunder, I'd really like you to amend your motion to have two options, excuse me, you know, you're obviously well within your right to do that.
Well, that was my suggestion is that we have more than one option when we come back.
Just keep in mind that each ordinance that comes in front of you is gonna have to have discussion, motion, public comment, so.
Can I get some clarification in terms of your motion, Mr. Mayor? Your motion doesn't seem to me to align exactly with what the requests were for the petition that they're getting signed. Are you trying to get a motion just to adjust this ordinance so that the brewery can be open on Sundays? Or, do you also want it to include everything that they have in their petition? Because I think that might be, help us to drill down on exactly what you're asking.
I think we should have exactly what they've asked in their petition.
Okay, so that's a lot more then.
Can you amend your motion, Mayor Grunder?
I would like to amend my motion to mirror the petition that the brewery is.
Thank you.
Putting forward. And we will wind up voting on probably anyway once they get the signature.
I second.
All right, we're gonna open up, since the gavel in my hand.
Yeah, the gavel's in your hand.
So, we're gonna open up to citizen comments now.
My name is Courtney Hayes. I did want to recommend that we put it on the ballot this year. As it's been already said, allow the citizens just to go out on record, be done with this, over and done. This is also a midterm election, which is generally a weaker one, which will hopefully promote more people to come out and vote when they normally would not. And last year, we put on the city charter, something that was very simple to me that could have easily been passed here in the commission meeting. Why not just go ahead and be done with this issue? Not wait for the petition to be done, which is gonna cause further delay and require another election when we got the one coming up in four months. So, be done with it and stop wasting all of our times on these commission meetings dealing with this issue over and over again. That's all.
Hi there. My name is Dana Pasquarella. This has just been dragged out for so long and we have a couple people with personal issues against the brewery and those are your personal issues. They are not the issues of everybody in our community. If you see on social media when something gets posted in the positive for the brewery, there's easily 400 likes, hearts, whatever, in hours. And let's just say, a quarter of those people have homes within the city limits. That's a lot compared to the three people that are against the brewery, along with a couple of you. We're just wasting time. You're wasting our tax dollars. Mr. Bluesworth, I am very upset. I own a home here in the city limits. I pay a ton of money in taxes, which pay your salaries as well as everybody else's. So, when you state that you're against a brewery because of just, I'm sorry, I don't have verbatim what you said, but it was, you're just about the people right here. I own a home here. My vote counts as well. Everybody in the city of High Springs has a vote. And if you're not representing everybody in the city, then you should not be on the council. Frankly, you should step down unless you represent everybody. It cannot just be a couple blocks. That's not the way it works. And there are literally three people complaining, three, that are vocal, that have anything bad to say about the brewery. No DUIs, no trouble on Sundays when they're open on Sundays. If you don't want to drink, don't drink. If you don't want to go to a brewery on Sundays, don't go to a brewery. But, your personal beliefs are not what this is about. This is about our community. And if you talk to our community at large, everybody is overwhelmingly for the brewery to be open on Sundays. Thank you.
Janet Evans, I'm really uncomfortable with the atmosphere that's been created in our community where people who oppose having the brewery open on Sundays are being shamed, dismissed, and potentially targeted with libelous and slanderous comments. If you look at the recently posted musical video on the brewery website, the brewery and its supporters put out an entirely emotional plea for support while attacking citizens of the same community who disagree on this move. The content of the video talks about the First Amendment rights applying to those of the brewery and its supporters, but disregards the First Amendment rights of others. In fact, the brewery even warns people away from a certain citizen depicting him as some crazed man who is an enemy to them. The video points to oppression as though the brewery is being oppressed somehow by citizens who take a different view. The brewery went into this agreement knowing what the law was. This isn't an us versus them, although now it's their position to describe it as such. A comment, I mean, somehow it is the demon opposition that has caused this problem for them instead of their own knowledge and agreement to what was in place at the time they opened. I am very concerned with the comments, the disrespectful comments that have been made to these commissioners, the comments that are being made around the community, social media. When you're, when you're telling people that a member of the community is a threat to them, it's enough. And I'm gonna be happy when this gets decided, but I think that this us versus them mentality going on really needs to end. And I don't think you're helping.
What did I do?
Kiffin ears, also known as spoiled brat by the person she's referring to. It's really interesting, the kind of divisiveness that has spawned in this, a conversation that we started in 2017 with great cordiality with the city. It's, some of the divisiveness that's happened on social media, the videos and whatever, those are citizens having satirical fun, First Amendment all the way. When, when we've attempted to correct on information related to us personally, it then gets dismissed as we were just not getting what we want, yada, yada, yada. Who cares? The reality of where we find ourselves faced today, I had made a similar suggestion some time back. I want to thank the city manager for the petition process from the beginning. He's the first person, fourth city manager, that we've encountered, first person who showed us and other citizens, it's a citizen that brought forth the petition. We're just a supporter as one of the businesses affected. There's 46 other businesses that are open on Sunday morning that would, that would love more traffic. And being able to, for the citizens to understand, the residents to understand their rights, I want to thank you for lending us that, just the knowledge of that opportunity. We just thought it was come kicking and screaming and begging for mercy. But, instead, there was a process. Thank you again for putting us on that path so that we can be more manageable, we can have a more professional, and we can have, you know, more adult-like approach and conversation to these things. Because I know that they're all sensitive. We've all grown up in the South for the most part, in Alachua County. This is our space and we understand the religious context that we all come from. And the petition is well, we're well on track. And I appreciate your support in trying to see these Sundays through and we'll, we have, you know, for ones we knew we got yeses from, immediately we have submitted those and in the, during last year, we also submitted those and so we're gonna, we'll work on some of these other ones and being able to do that. The five words that Commissioner Howell was talking about were manufacturer of alcoholic beverages or. And so, when you add those five words in, in E, so, you know, when you're looking at notwithstanding the foregoing, a business holding a beverage license, which manufactures, which a manufacturer of alcoholic beverage.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Absolutely. But, you get the point.
Vice Mayor Miller, if I may, I am very big about the time on this, but I think what he's saying right here at this point, I would like him to finish his thought because I think it's material to the motion. Would you mind giving an additional 30 seconds? I've never done this for a system, but I'm asking for additional 30 seconds so I can finish this thought because I think it's gonna be important to Danielle and I as we move forward. What he wants to add, it's up to you.
Go ahead.
I'll focus and answer any questions. The part in there about special events, I felt like that was a great move and I want to commend you for that because any of the nonprofits can file for a temporary alcohol license, like the Women's Club, to be able to sell. I think that that's a perfect component. And, you know, one thing that allows you to maintain your stricter on bars popping up is adding that manufacturer of alcoholic beverages or, and establishment, you know, where 51% or more is derived from non-alcoholic drinks or food. And so, it's, our desire is to promote local food. You know, we have 15 to 20 food trucks in a given month that we're supporting, you know, and we're promoting seven. Thank you. I'll get better. Thank you.
I think there's some good points made here. Commissioner White's made a very good point regarding the loosening of vendor and distribution laws. I fully support that. I think that's something that could be worked on. I think Commissioner Bluesworth makes a good point, too, as far as compromising. It goes one way, it doesn't go two ways, and it should go two ways. You know, what, what is, you know, and I support the Sunday Blue laws, by the way. And what attracts people to High Springs? What attracts people to High Springs is the strong environmental stewardship and the pro-God and pro-family atmosphere that is baked in our culture and that's largely backed up by policy. No one is stopping anybody from getting hammered on Sundays they so choose at their home or at their buddy's place. Six days a week is good enough. But, is this the affirmation that we want to make as leaders in public office? You know, that the Lord's day is no longer holy? You know, that was one that we'd be making, quite frankly. Government and its leaders must have a standard, otherwise we have constant chaos. I have a standard and that is, first off, legislation should honor and glorify God and second off, it should facilitate the creation and maintaining high-trust societies. If one has to go to a drinking, if has to go to a drinking establishment on Sunday, they either have a total disregard for God's law and authority or they are struggling with addiction. And either way, we should not be putting stumbling blocks in our fellow man's path. We are not honoring God, loving our fellow man, or building high-trust communities by doing so. That being said also, there's an issue of, if there's not an issue of traffic ingestion in High Springs already, I mean, that affects our local community. Seven days a week is even more traffic ingestion we're talking about. We need to get back to a place in American society where We need to get back to a place in American society where God and family comes first, not the Chamber of Commerce, quite frankly. And, you know, and I put upon you, you know, the commission to not be molded by the Chamber. Instead, you know, we need godly women and men in office who can, you know, mold the Chamber for the City of High Springs and for all of our local communities in North Central Florida. Thank you.
Hello, Austin Douglas. I don't really have any opinion one way or another, but I do just want to kind of piggyback onto that and just say, not every citizen that lives here is religious. I'm not going to disclose my religious views. It's not important, but I don't think everyone that lives here is religious, and therefore I don't think the laws should be replicated or reflected of that, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just going to jump in really briefly, because I think that it's going to calm down the conversation. The Establishment Clause prohibits you from enacting laws in accordance with any religion. That's of the Constitution. So, and I don't think that this ordinance as written brings religion up as a question, but I advise you as a commission to steer clear of discussing religion when making legislative decisions.
Okay, I just, I did want to respond to one, just so we have put it out there, because it's, we're screaming. The Chamber is not in this discussion, and I just don't want it, because I know how citizens get, and they'll get, the Chamber did something. So the Chamber has nothing to do with this topic. This topic is brewery, and everybody, it's nothing to do with the Chamber. I just wanted to put that out there, because I don't want to go left with the Chamber.
My name's Lanier Smith. I am a leading member of the Lions Club here in High Springs, and also on the board of the Chamber of Commerce for High Springs. I am not on High Springs word of mouth. I don't know of any conversations that anyone in this room has referred to, because I distance myself from that, because I do, I was raised right, and I don't have time for that. I really don't. But when I heard the Chamber come up, I thought, well, what did the Chamber do? What did we do? Just so everybody knows, we work our asses off to bring people together to this community. Doesn't have anything to do with anybody's feelings or issues. I'm quite disappointed in anybody that has anything to say about the efforts that Sharon Decker, myself, Commissioner Miller, or anybody else that wants to volunteer, volunteer their time.
Mr. Mayor.
To put things together.
Lanier.
I'm just, these are the things that upset me when I come in here, and there's no need for it. I appreciate, I thought that tonight's conversation, and I've been to each meeting covering this issue with the brewery, I think you all did a very outstanding job. And I thought a lot of creativity came out of it, and up until that comment right there, I would have sat quiet all night. So I'm going to go back and sit in my chair now. Thank you very much.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. I just want any more public comments.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Tim Omler. I realize this is a touchy subject, and even when we started talking about this, I could tell the change of the atmosphere in this room was, I was thinking you could cut with a knife. The one thing that, the one thing about all this is, I have heard that you have done compromises, and in my opinion, that there could be more compromises to be made to allow the brewery to be open on Sundays. Sounds like with permitting and everything like that, is a good start, and it is. The other thing that always bothered me is that, you know, with the ordinance as it's written, is that you have to have 51% or more of your funds to come from selling food. So you have all the restaurants, Great Outdoors, Pink Flamingo, just to name a couple, and Watershed that have bars inside. They're able to sell alcohol, you can drink as much as you want, and get hammered if you want on a Sunday. And like you guys had mentioned before, with the brewery, there has been no DUIs or any problems coming out of the brewery. So why not allow them, amend the ordinance to allow them to be open on Sundays? Even if you have to do it after a certain time, fine. But another thing I wanted to touch on, Commissioner Bloodsworth, you had mentioned about like all the subdivisions around High Springs, you know, that we're only looking, that maybe possibly, if I misunderstand you, I'm sorry, that it was, we're looking out for ourselves. Well, I mean, I'm in the city limits, so to say that, you know, hey, you don't want to put it on the ballot, that hurts me as a young homeowner, you know? I bought my first house out here just, you know, seven years ago. So I just wanted to be known, like, sometimes it's not always about that, and to be honest, like, change is coming to High Springs, growth is coming. Just have to find a way to do it right. And when you do it right, everybody's prosperous. Thank you.
Any other citizen comments? Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor, but I just got one question with the motion that's on the floor. So is the motion on the floor, when the ordinance come back, is it like a full-out repeal? Is that the ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I hate to speak on your behalf, but if I may, I believe the mayor's motion was to put to the ballot the petition, the ordinance that is reflected in the petition that's being circulated amongst the populace right now as the question for the referendum. Am I correct, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Vice Mayor, would it be appropriate, I don't know if all of us have seen that petition, so that we understand what it is we're talking about, would it be appropriate for us to understand that language before we move that motion forward, or?
Keep in mind, you would see it. You'd still have to approve it to go to the ballot. So this isn't your rubber stamp by any means whatsoever. You'd still have to have at least one public meeting on this issue, and that's when I discern whether or not it's a resolution or an ordinance, but.
And in that conversation, would we as a commission be able to vote on any kind of verbiage amendments in that conversation?
I don't see why. If it's a significant change, it'd have to come back for another read, but based upon the timeline that Angela put together, and I think Mayor Grunder was touching on this earlier, the deadline isn't tomorrow. I mean, we're tight.
It's pretty close, yeah.
We're tight. There's not a whole lot of room for dancing around, but if you made substantive changes, it would have to come back for another read. But other than that, I mean, you wouldn't be constricted, I guess, is my point, if you wanted to make changes next meeting.
Okay. If I may, Mr. Vice Mayor, I have one further comment. Ms. Pastorella was talking about this being a personal issue for three of us. It's not. It's not at all, and I can assure you that that's not the case at all. I think we all recognize that the business has done a lot for downtown. Unfortunately, you mentioned social media and First Amendment and all kinds of things. Well, social media is a wicked, wicked tool, unfortunately. There's a comment that was made by one of the owners, that this is a vendetta against one institution that has poured their hearts and money into the city and played fairly. It's not. I want to make sure that I get that really clear, because I don't usually comment in return. I try not to do that on social media. I'd love for folks to look at what our property looked like in 2018 and what it looks like today. Hands down, everybody acknowledges the vast improvements over an industrial welding facility. Absolutely. Nobody, I've never heard anybody say, man, I wish it was Archie's again. Not. We're not asking for wholesale change. We've worked with three different city managers and numerous commissioners to make this right. Well, yeah, there's been, is it any wonder that city managers come and go with the way that Mr. Marshall has been put in the middle of this? This is not his battle. This is not, he should not be in the middle of this, and I apologize, Mr. Marshall, if I'm stepping out of line, but this is a commission issue, and the time that he and his staff have had to put into this because of all of the input, he's got a city to run. He's got, you know, he's the CEO of the city. This is our lane here, so. There are three commissioners who maintain the old guard in Whites, Miller, and Bloodsworth who have made it their mission to destroy us. That's a fact. Again, stuff like this goes out on social media with impunity. That's not a fact. If anybody could show me words that I have said anywhere near this, I will publicly apologize at the next meeting. I don't have to go to the brewery every weekend to acknowledge that they are a successful business. It's not a fact. And then when it came to my coming there the night of the election, mind you, she said terrible things about the brewery, but decided her place of celebration to her, winning the seat, was at the very place she fought against for years. Again, factually incorrect. The first time the brewery being open on a Sunday ever came to me was February of 2024, when Scott Walker called me on a Saturday saying, hey, we've been, the brewery has been told they can't be open for Art Fair on the Green. Madam Mayor, this has been done historically, and I wasn't going to say no. That was not my decision, so of course I'm not going to say no. And then the next thing, March 17th, came to the commission for a vote, and Commissioner Williams and I said no, because we recognized that we needed to make the ordinance such that it was legal to do that, which we did. Took a couple of months, but we did it. Let's see, so I have not been fighting against the brewery for years. None of us up here were here when you opened. That's right, she came to the brewery when she won the seat as an F-U to us. Not super-nice words. We welcomed her, knowing it was hands down the most spiteful thing a spineless human being she is can do. We have heartless, bad human beings representing the city and making decisions for the citizens of the city. It's time to rally and get Whites, Miller, and Bloodsworth out. Absolutely, you're right to do that. So just, so you know, lucky for you guys, I'm not spineless. I'm not. Lucky for me, I'm not either. And I'm not spiteful. I really genuinely thought that the modifications that we made to the ordinance gave you the path for real compromise with the citizens. I support what we did, and I still don't know why you didn't avail yourself of the opportunity to open on other Sundays. I would have fully supported that. I still fully support that. And I fully support your petition. I think it's a great idea. You know, 10% of the registered voters in the city, it's not a super-high bar, you know? Hopefully you can get that. I would certainly hope you could. And I do. You know, if you got that petition across the finish line, I think it's a great idea to send it to the ballot, 100%, so. But, you know, the kind of vitriol that we've seen on social media, I'm not putting that out there. I certainly hope that I've never given that vibe to anybody, but, you know, it was not spiteful. I got invited to join my friends. You'll know who it was, because your bartender was taking pictures of us while we were there. The bartenders at the watershed and Pink Flamingo don't take pictures of us, but I've joined them there, too. It was a Tuesday, watershed was closed, so there was no spite there. You know, but you can make assumptions. This is not a personal vendetta, not in the least for me, not at all. This is just, it was a genuine attempt at compromise, so I just want to make sure that I set that clear. Thank you, sir.
I didn't. Oh, please, well, I'm not.
I'm going to piggyback on Commissioner White. I have never publicly nor personally condemned the brewery. Never have I ever. I have followed the law by the ordinance that has been placed before us. We've compromised to it from the food trucks on down. That was before me. With that being said, you said you had 15 or so food trucks that come to your facility. You're supposed to be having a food truck vendor checklist for each food truck. We only have two. You're not even following the ordinance and the law. So all I'm asking is follow the law. That's all we're trying to do here, is follow the law. So we're compromising, but you're not following the law. So I don't have a personal vendetta against you or any business in this town nor resident. Follow the law, just like we have to follow procedure up here. I don't follow social media. People tell me what I'm hearing. I don't, I'm not going to be on that junk. I'm not on the Book of Faces, whatever it may be called. Follow the law. That's what we're going to do here. So don't accuse me of a personal vendetta or a religious thing. We're following the laws that High Springs gives us the right to do. As citizens, as commissioners, to uphold those laws. That's what we sworn in here for. So please, you can say what you want to tomorrow, or Saturday, or Sunday, or Monday, I don't care. Follow the law. That's all we're asking.
Mr. Vice Mayor, you have a properly moved and seconded motion on the floor. You've permitted public comment, and unless any of the commissioners have any further discussion, it would be inappropriate.
I got something real quick. I didn't know we were bringing, I should have brought some of the stuff that was said about me and my family to this as well, I guess, if we're bringing the Facebook stuff up, because I'm going to tell you that, unfortunately, that stuff comes on both sides, and it's disgusting and it is sickening, and we are a better town than that. And I really wish that everybody would act like that, because that stuff right there on either side of this, and I don't think this is a personal vendetta. We're trying to do what we think is right up here, and just because we disagree, that's fine. I still think these are fine people. I think these are good people. I'm still glad they live in our town. But I will say, it does come from both sides, and unfortunately, it's supporters of mine that go after them, and unfortunately, it's supporters of theirs that eviscerate me and everything I'm about, and try to go after my family's good name as well. And believe me, it's sickening on both sides, and I think we got to do better as a town, and we got to come together and realize that we can have those open and honest conversations. I'm literally a phone call away, and I know they are, too. It's funny when people get on social media, the things they say is a lot different than what they say on my face whenever we're out on a Tuesday night. But I agree, I think, you know, the both sides of that social media stuff, it's sad. It really is.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Is this, this not a real call?
You can just do your standard. All those in favor, aye. All those opposed, same sign.
All right, all those in favor, aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right. You can have your gamble back.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
No.
Please. I'm asking from the bottom of my heart. So Commissioner White, you did a application, so let me back up. A year ago, when I first started, you changed the ordinance so I can sign special use permits for the brewery to be open, and the understanding, and I can be wrong, the way I understood it is I can approve it for federal holidays and community events such as fundraisers. You know, if Santa Fe volleyball wants to come do a fundraiser, they can be open on Sunday. What I'm not comfortable with, again, as a city manager, I have no dog in this alcohol. I care less what you guys vote on, but I still have to sign special use permits, and I don't want the community saying, I'm letting the brewery be open every Sunday for something that wasn't the ordinance when you passed it for me to sign. So I would like a little guidance from the commission on what the standard will be for me to approve from the Sunday, because the way I understand it, the application that you made lets them be open every Sunday, and if you guys are going to be that, giving me that kind of discretion, that's fine. I just, I took it as federal holidays and significant community events. I need a little guidance on what the standard's going to be, because I'm going to make a mistake. It's going to happen. I make mistakes every day. For example, they were open on Father's Day. We allowed them to be open on Juneteenth, because it's a federal holiday, and it fell in the middle, and I basically told them, pick a weekend. You want to be open Father's Day? You want to be open? I called them, I said, you guys don't have a permit for Father's Day? Just trying to help them out? Oh, it's Juneteenth, not a problem. I need to know a standard between now and when this goes to the ballot, for me to continue to either approve or deny Sunday permits between now and then, because me personally, I'd like to, the full transparency, as a citizen, I signed the petition. That's as a citizen, not as a city manager. I would like the brewery to be the Bills' backer bar, because we're going to win the Super Bowl this year.
Go Niners.
And, but I need to know, like, you know, does the Super Bowl count? I would think that was, I would probably approve that, but would Sunday Fun Day count? Well, that's a little too much area of discretion for me. I need to understand better.
Mr. Mayor, I think that that's, you all are welcome to weigh in on it, but my reading of the ordinance is, when we were defining citywide events, we were thinking of Pioneer Days. We were thinking of city entirety of the city significance, so, you know, Sunday Fun Day's not going to fall into that. That's going to be something the commission has to approve. And Commissioner White, I hate to put words in your mouth, but my understanding of what you've drafted there, having not looked at it myself.
Yeah, I didn't send it to you, sir. Yeah, I didn't send it to you, sir.
Is, is something that you would have, it would have to be brought before the commission for approval.
Yes, yes.
But it could be one blanket approval-
Exactly.
Because it sounds like she has every Sunday between now and-
The end of the year.
The end of the year.
Just as an example, I mean, it doesn't have to be-
Sure.
I just, I wanted to make sure that it was put out there, that that, that possibility has been there for a year. And so, just, you know, in, in an attempt to, to push the petition forward, I think that that would have made it a little bit better.
So, the, the power in which you have, the power you've, you know, vested in your city manager is for citywide events and for federal holidays? And I, um, I can't, I think we got all of the federal holidays in that, like, parentheses list, but if we missed one, a federal holiday is a federal holiday, you know?
Right.
Um, but my understanding of the commission at that time we drafted that ordinance is, is citywide, and the reason we put an example of Pioneer Day was because it's really one of your most profound and hearty citywide events. So, um, I, I would say that, for example, Father's Day, I'm not sure is a federal hol- federally recognized holiday.
Yeah, I was like, I believe it.
I don't, I don't, kids are tough, it probably should be. And Mother's Day too.
Kids can be very mean.
But if it's going to be lumped into all one petition anyways, it, it just may be easiest to bring it to the commission and have the commission approve it, or have them pick out federal holidays and citywide events.
Can I get clarification, I think, from Mr. Marshall? Before it comes to us, he has to sign that special permit application, and you want us to make sure, I mean, it still has to come to the commission for approval, but you have, you would sign it first, and you want to make sure you get clarification of our intent to sign it and bring it to us?
No, that's not what I'm saying.
No, sorry.
So, when the brewery comes and they wanna be open for a Sunday, they bring the application, it goes out to staff, you know, like Chief Shepard and Chief Peters, they weigh in on any issues, and what, long as there's no issues, I have the authority to sign it or decline it. But the issue, kinda like what Danielle says, when the ordinance was amended, it was only, it was restricted on what I have the discretion to do it. Just for full transparency, I have never denied, I think I get him approved within 24 to 48 hours. But, you're, again, the alcohol issue is not a city manager thing, but it's a community, it's a community sensitive topic, and if the brewery comes to me and says, I wanna be open for a fundraiser for a kid fighting leukemia-
It comes here.
It comes here.
It comes to here.
But, you know, I, where's that discretion fall with me? As far as I read the ordinance, it's only federal holidays and community-wide events as far as Pioneer Days and whatnot.
Right.
But, you know, that's, I was confused by your, your things. That's where, I, I have a clear, I have a much better understanding. Thank you.
Okay.
So, we good? I was like, I can speak to it if you want to, because I know I was like, one of the driving forces.
No, I, I've got my instructions for the next commission meeting, and I think if you all are finished discussing the topic, you're more than welcome to move on to your next agenda item.
Yeah, yeah. All right, we will move on to, um, citizen requests and comments for issues not on the
David Lynch, I beg the city manager and the commissioners not to pave over our concrete Moving on to another subject, small children driving electric scooters at high rates of speed. I ask the commissioners to be concerned about this. Is this what they want for their city? Small children exposing themselves to, to high risk. Moving on to the third topic, High Springs Brewing. Do the commissioners want the name of their city associated with a product that kills 7,000 people each day?
Thank you, Mr. Lynch.
Hi, I'm Don Decker with the Historical Society, and, uh, on a light note for tonight, we have some new brochures, and, uh, you can become one of our members. Everything's on here. We have some old photographs in it. Uh, does anybody remember the, uh, high school from 1902? No, I guess not.
I think Jeremy went there.
But I wanna thank, uh, all the commissioners in the city to support us and the museum, and, uh, talked with the city manager a couple of times about helping us, and good job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody who hasn't gone to the museum, you gotta, you do need to go over and check it out. It is, it is impressive. Any other citizen requests and comments? Okay. Moving on, do we have any commissioner responses? We will move on to, uh, new business item one, discuss, consider, and act on moving the regular commission meeting date of August 14th to August 21st.
Mr. Mayor, I was asking to be able to move that meeting time, because I will be out of the country, and was hoping that maybe we can move it to that date, so I would not miss another meeting.
Um, I may not be in attendance, but, um, it's fine if you are moving. I'm on a six-city tour right now, and that is a tour date.
Understood. Miss Strickland, you guys, I will not be here, so I wanted to give the opportunity to do that, since I did miss one on, missed two from my last vacation, so, uh, wanted to see if you guys would be willing to do that.
Mr. Mayor, I have no problem with that.
Well, you, do you know for sure if you'll be out?
I'm not, I don't know for sure, but I know we're leaving on that day, but we may can leave after the meeting. It just depend on how strenuous.
We picked that date, but is that possible to move it to the week before? Not the Thursday, but maybe, uh, Tuesday or Monday or Tuesday of the week before that. If that works for everybody, I'm okay with that too, if that works for everybody. If it don't-
Like the fourth or the fifth, or are you talking about the 11th and 12th?
Yes, sir. If you don't mind, I'll pull a calendar here.
Oh, yes, sir. Yeah, I just missed, I missed the last meeting, because we were out of the country.
Where'd you go?
Italy for two weeks.
So, the fourth, August the 4th, 5th, I hate to do it on a Wednesday of the 6th, whatever it's about his schedule, I fly out on the 7th. So, I would be gone 7th through and hope to return the 21st. I'm hoping to be here on the 20th.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm fine with the 5th or the 21st, either of those.
Now, barring that something doesn't happen with a flight to come back home.
Yeah.
I mean, we can leave it on that day. Um, like I said, I, it just depend on what's, like, if we have a topic like this tonight?
Right, it's gonna run a long.
I might have to tip out, but I know I can be present in the beginning.
Would August 5th work for everybody? How about August the 5th? Are we all in town August the 5th?
August 5th would work for me.
My beautiful wife, are we in town?
You're not.
You're not here?
If not, you hold it like it is, and I just won't be here.
As a heads up, I don't know if I'm here August 5th.
Okay.
Then just keep it as it is, and business will run as usual.
Well, if we do the 21st, at least Vice Mayor Miller can be here for part of the meeting. And if it runs long-
So, let, I'll make a motion that we move it to the August 21st.
Second.
Thank you, gentlemen, ladies.
Okay.
Like I say, depending on if I don't have a flight issue coming back on.
Yeah. Do we have any citizen, excuse me, citizen comment for that?
Correct.
No meeting on August 5th. We will move the meeting to August 21st, as long as everybody votes on it. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign.
Mr. Mayor, before you move on from that discussion, every year, our office has a conflict in July with your second meeting, the Florida Municipal Attorneys Association Conference is always that Thursday, and so, we typically will send Mr. Folds, which is fine, we can do that again this year. However, I, if, I would like to be in attendance. I wanted to ask you all if you would be willing to move the July 24th meeting to the 22nd.
July 24th.
To Tuesday, the 22nd?
Mm-hmm.
I'm absolutely good with that.
That's okay with me.
I make a motion that we move July 24th to, to, July 22nd.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Do we have any public comment on that? Okay. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign.
Thank you all, I appreciate that.
Whatever we can do to help. New business item number two, discuss, consider, and act on awarding the bid for ITB number 2025-01 road paving project.
Good evening. Jason Kittle, Public Works. So, before you, you have the bids we received for the roads paving project. Um, and before I get to our recommendations, I'll just kinda go over how I did this. Each, each, I picked a handful of roads, and each road was bitted on individually, so you could award it as individually, or you could do it as a package. So, on like the first page, you have five, six roads there, and each road, the companies came in and they, oh, put a price down as it was bitted individually, and then at the bottom, it was done as a package. So, we have two pages, and you could really pick any roads you wanted. You could pick a road from this company and go to another company and pick a road from them. You don't have to pick the whole package. You can pick whatever you like. What, when the bids came in, we picked, we recommended picking Hicks for the price. I mean, we have 240,000, I believe, that we have to spend on this project, so, um, I actually didn't think the first page would even come close to that number, and when it did, I was pretty happy. Um, on the second page of Hicks, I also pick, recommend picking 199th Lane for 26,000. It's the road in front of the church over there by, um, Ashton Ridge and Lower Point, where Subway is, and, um, yeah, Pepperoni's.
I need that.
Is there any questions on this, if you're confused?
It's the, I'm, yeah, I was just thinking the same thing.
Jason, if you don't mind, can you show them the papers? If you don't, or I can. I was with Jason today. I rode around, and we've checked these roads. So, if you'll look at this particular, it's the one you and I looked at today, right?
Correct.
It's the one that says, road removal, new construction, road installation. And then the other one was this one where the roads to Mill, where you pick and choose. That's ones Jason and I rode around looking at the roads today, get clarification on it.
My question is gonna be, we ran into, uh, issues throughout last year, before you were in charge, of the road saying, the, the job saying that it was gonna be a, uh, complete removal, new lime rock, and then not, not a pave over. And unfortunately, I believe we got a pave over as a, as a pivot thing, and then we've also had other roads that just didn't kinda live up to, uh, the, the spirit of the bid at all. Are all these bids for the exact same removal, everything else?
So, there were no roads that I picked that were just concrete only. So, there's no removal of just concrete, but like 237th, that's in this, uh, bid for the Hicks, where they picked, you got 237th all the way down to 183rd Place. Um, there's concrete under that road, and in the scope of work, we put to remove the concrete and then do a new base and a new asphalt.
Okay.
And they all, I mean, it's in the scope work. I even called Hicks and talked to them, make sure that they knew, you know, with that price, that you are removing concrete, and yes.
Yeah, total removal, not just to pave, not get it down to concrete and then pave over.
Removing all the concrete, it's taking it away, doing it the right way. It won't show up the lines in two years or less. Like, I don't know if you've seen over here, where they did 237th, I think, not even a year ago. If you ride over that road, you can already see the lines start to come through.
Yep, you sure can.
Uh, my question is, have we ever worked with Hicks before?
No, we haven't, no.
Okay, so, we have.
I mean, there weren't many reviews, but there were good ones on them, and, um, I think they used to be, it's, uh, they changed company names, um, the comp, the owner died like four years ago in a helicopter crash.
Oh, Jesus.
But, I mean, I, I've talked to other contractors out there, and they didn't have anything but good things to say about them.
Now, is anybody on this list we worked with before?
No. Unless we, Blankenship we've worked with, but on little jobs, just like for a patching and stuff like that.
Okay, so for me, Blankenship would be absolutely not.
And, and they are, Hicks are out of Trenton, by the way, so they are local.
They're close, then, they're close.
Yeah.
I'm the project manager with Hicks. Any questions? Yeah.
Jason, I guess one question I have is, it just in terms of looking at the, the cost differential. Materials are fairly static. You know, it's expensive to work on roads, but there's a big difference in your costs, your price versus others.
My name's Kevin Smith. I'm the project manager. I do our estimates and operations manager. Hicks, we're a fairly small company, but we're FDOT pre-qualified. We hold a continuing service contract with GRU. We do a lot of work in Gainesville. Um, we just finished a $1.3 million job for Gilchrist County, doing small rural subdivision roads there. Um, we were shocked to see the difference in prices too. We know the concrete down there, but not sure why they were all so concerned about what the cost of this project was. We don't usually leave that much money on the table. We did bid it a little thin, just because we have some guys local here in High Springs, and want them to work local. But, um, we feel confident with our price, that we can give you all a quality product.
So, Jason, with the road that is, has concrete underneath, to Mr. Lynch's point, there's already asphalt on top of that concrete?
There is, yeah. It's 237th, the road actually, High Springs Brewery is off of, where it goes from 340th, which is Post Springs Road, all the way to 27. You got the ice machine on one side, brewery on the, that's 237. Under that road, the majority of it is concrete, and it's just overlaid with asphalt. That's why it has so many cracks in it.
Okay.
While we're on the subject of the concrete, Jason and I, like I say, we rode around with guidance of Jeremy's permission for us to ride around, look, because you know how I felt about the project down there by the park? That tree, we paid for a job, didn't get done. We threw money away on that road project. I wanted to talk about Mr. Lynch's issue with the concrete, and as Jason has pointed out, this road right back here goes from the police department down, that old concrete road, towards Coach Buck's location down there. That has river rock in the concrete. As Jason said, you cannot mimic that too much. It's gonna cost High Springs a lot of money to keep that road up to its standard that we're used to seeing there. The road's not wide enough. I'm assuming, as you know, you, you're gonna get it, what, 20 feet? Is that what our goal is?
Close, 21, I think it was the most big.
And Jason showed me all sorts of things that looked like I thought we had, somebody had gone in there years ago and cut a section of the road out and put water lines or something. That's not it. That's where the asphalt and the concrete are breaking up. So, he's doing right by going down to the baseline, right, and redoing all that, and putting us asphalt down there. The concrete, we can't afford it.
No, we can't.
If it was a historical Main Street concrete, I would say, we gotta figure out how to keep that historically like it is. But these side roads that are concrete with river rock in it, I don't see where we can afford to maintain that up in today's world with the traffic we have, and the residents need decent roads for their tax dollars.
And it's already paved over.
It's already, now, this road over here's not paved over.
Right, and it's not paved over.
But when that starts breaking down, we're gonna have to do something with that. We, you can't maintain something that's that old and keep it to the historical way it looks. We're just gonna have to understand we can't keep everything like that in today's world. The, the stuff he showed us today, showed me today, we have to deal with it with the cracks. He's doing the right thing. We just wanna make sure you, as Hicks representative, that we're paying and getting what we're paying for.
Correct.
We have not been getting that lately.
I completely understand that.
We can't keep wasting people's money.
That's a fact.
Uh, everybody, everybody on this board is tired of that. We want that done right, and Jason is gonna have more oversight on you. You'll see that green vest, if he even wears one, he's gonna be looking over your shoulder. That's what we want to see.
We're sure y'all will be happy with it when we get done. Like I said, we can give you in contact at Gilchrist County, that was a same.
Did y'all do, uh? Spring Hill?
Spring Ridge, yes.
Spring Ridge, y'all did that, okay. I delivered off of that road, I know how bad it was.
Yeah, no, it's much smoother now.
Yes.
Is there any other representatives from these other companies? I'm going to make sure everybody gets their fair time. I'll tell you what, I've said this in the past, whenever showing up means a lot to us. When you come look at us in the face at a meeting and, and answer any questions we have, that means a heck of a lot to people like us in the small town. We really appreciate that, so thank you for coming out tonight.
We're from Trenton, we're a small town, we want to work more in these rural areas.
I love it.
Commissioner Bloodsworth, thank you for taking the time to do that. Mr. Marshall, thank you for giving him access to the Public Works Director to do that. I would make a motion that we follow with Jason's recommendation that we award the bid to Hicks.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Do we have any citizen comment? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Mr. Hicks, or Hicks representative, show us what you can do.
You're wearing the right kind of shirt, so you started off well.
Okay, we will move on to discuss, consider and act on nominating a representative from the High Springs City Commission to serve on the Joint Water and Climate Policy Board with the county.
Uh, I want to say that we have a water chemistress on our board. So it would only make sense to put the water chemistress on this particular board, in my opinion.
I could not agree more with you. I sat with, uh, City Manager Marshall yesterday, and while we were talking over the, the agenda, I said, well, I think I know who I'd want to represent us on that board.
So I nominate Commissioner White.
Second.
Third.
Commissioner White, do you feel like you have the ability to do this?
Sir, yes, sir. I would be honored, yes, sir.
Do we have any citizen comment on this matter? Okay, been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Just what you wanted, more responsibility.
Roll, let's roll.
All right, moving on to new business item four, discuss balances of allowed uses of general government impact fees.
This is an informational item only. We have had government, general government impact fees for almost two and a half years now. And especially coming off the Parks Master Plan presentation a couple of weeks ago, I think the timing is good for this conversation too. I wanted to briefly go through what types of impact fees we have, what their uses are, and what our balances are. I maybe should jump to the end, which has the balances, because that's probably what you're most interested in. But let me just really quickly, so at the end of calendar year twenty-two, the beginning of fiscal year twenty-three, there were, you adopted an ordinance that imposed new impact fees. And so any new development after January first of twenty-three is paying these impact fees. There was a fee study done by Duncan and Associates, and that's how the, the fees were determined. And all of the expenditures on this funding has to be approved by the commission. Um, we have ten years from the date when we receive the funds to use them for projects. And if after the ten years they haven't, we may need to return them to the payer. So we have to keep really good track of who's paying, so we know what neighborhoods we're dealing with. And an administrative fee of three percent may be retained by the city. We haven't done anything like that. We just, all the money is set aside in a fund. So there's a parks fee, and that's only for residential development, not for commercial. There's a general government component and a transportation component, and those are both for commercial and residential development. Under transportation, let me just say, you will see a theme throughout these, and they're not dissimilar to wild spaces. This is all new. It can't be maintenance, it can't be repair. It is strictly creating new things. So you'll see the same kind of language in each of them, and I'm not going to read through all of them again. This is kind of just to give you an introduction to the concept and give you some food for thought while we're talking about other capital projects coming up. So funds collected under transportation, and they start out in the definitions with what they shall not be used for. And like I said, maintenance rehab, repair of existing facilities. It's just basically just think new things to help support the growth in the city. It's very generically how I think of it. It can be used to administer and plan these funds. They always love to have studies and things like that paid for in these plans before you do anything, of course. The acquisition or expansion of land, amenities, facilities to create public parks and recreation purposes. So like I said, this kind of follows with the master plan from parks, where we talked about explain, expanding coverage of parks. And these fees would fit perfectly into that. General government impact fees, again, same kind of idea administering planning, et cetera. We can also look at building facilities, purchasing vehicles. General government facilities, so it's like police and fire, city administration, things you typically would think of like our general fund budget. And the transportation impact fees, these are a little more, I would, kind of technical, because I'm not a roads person. I don't build roads, but they talk about corridor studies, environmental assessments, design and construction. And then again, they focus on construction of new through lanes, turn lanes, bridges. So I was starting to think about this and think about, just because McDonald's topic came up and what the road looks like there, and okay, can we use this money for that? I don't know the answer to that. I'm not qualified to make that decision. But those are the kinds of things that kind of prompts me to think of. You know, and then you can have drainage facilities in conjunction with new roadway construction. Doesn't mean you can do a waste, a stormwater project unless it's tied to a new roadway. So it takes some, it'll take some work to really interpret these, I think, as we bring up projects. So this is the important part. So this is the impact fees that we have collected through June twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-five this week. So in fiscal year twenty-three, again, we started in January, so we missed the first quarter of the year. And then it took a little bit to kind of start collecting them, of course. Residential, we collected sixty-two thousand. There were no commercial new developments during that period of time, so we did not collect anything there. Fiscal year twenty-four, you can see we collected about another hundred, a hundred thousand between residential and commercial. And then through this fiscal year so far, forty-three in residential and fourteen in commercial. So we have about two hundred and twenty-five thousand in the general government bucket. In transportation, you can see again, because there were no commercial projects, we just had residential funds. In twenty-four, it was just about a hundred thousand, and year to date, it's a little over fifty thousand. So we have about two hundred and ten in transportation. And then with parks, we, over the three years, have about a hundred and five. And of course, these will continue to grow as developers come in. And it can be one project, it can be a multi-project, a multi-building project. So this money is sitting. We have it set aside, it's not being used for anything else. Like I said, it has to be approved by the commission for approved uses as defined in the ordinance. And again, I think, I'm, just want you to know it's there, because we really haven't talked about it much. There's been a lot going on. So we're at a good point where there's enough money to start really thinking about it. And we have some upcoming projects I think it will be good for. And we can look at this as we look at a five-year capital improvement plan and start using that as a funding source. We've also got infrastructure fees, we've got the wild spaces money. So there's a lot, it's kind of, we're coming into a good opportunity where we have a lot more options to put together to try to get things done, so. If you have any questions, otherwise I will let you move on. I know we have a lot on the.
If I may, I've got, so we have ten years. So from the stuff that we got in fiscal year twenty twenty-three, we have to spend that in ten years?
Yes.
So really, a good goal would be have a five-year revolving set of, to make sure we're keeping up?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, definitely. And we're tracking it like we do with the, you know, the wild spaces money, where we have the periods of time.
Okay.
Same thing. Okay? So again, just for you, and if anytime we want to have that conversation, let me know and we'll get some more information.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any citizen comment about that? Okay, we will move on to new business item number five, discuss, consider and act on ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh three.
Mr. Mayor, this is ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero three, an ordinance granting to Duke Energy Florida LLC DBA Duke Energy, an electric utility rights, rights of way utilization franchise, prescribing the terms and conditions related to the occupancy of municipal streets and rights of way in the city of High Springs, Florida, for the purpose of providing electrical service, providing for severability of provisions and providing for an effective date. Mr. Mayor, if I may introduce this to you all, you all had a franchise agreement with Duke. It's expired, we're up for a new one. The things that I think are very important that I would like to point out to you and bring to your attention is that if you look at section six, which is located on page five of eleven, the city is being, in, in return for this franchise agreement, you are receiving six percent of the company's base revenues per month. I have confirmed with utility experts that that is industry standard. So I just wanted you to know that you are right where everybody else is. You're not going to get anything better than that. That was negotiated by your city manager. The other thing that I wanted to bring to your attention that we were able to negotiate into the contract is, and I think I may have to go back, because I think it's before where I just, oh, it's actually the pair, the section C, right above where I had you just look. If for whatever reason, you all, the period ends for this franchise agreement, and you're in the midst of negotiating your next one, cities are in, in their negotiations with, with utility companies now, are essentially being told, well, we're not going to pay you during that period of time between the expiration of your franchise agreement and the entrance of the new one. And my office said, no, you're going to pay us. So the franchise fee will continue until such time as a new franchise fee agreement is entered into. So I wanted to bring your attention to those two provisions, because those obviously affect your bottom line more than anything. Mr. Marshall has reviewed the, the ordinance as well. We went through it and compared differences between the previous one and this one, addition of new defining terms that I imagine there's probably litigation about of people not knowing what exactly it meant. But those are the, the things that, that my office felt were the most important to bring to your attention.
Okay. I don't have any questions or comments about it. I think it's pretty standard.
Mr. Mayor, I, I got my questions answered. Thank you for Mr. Marshall. He had a great understanding of what it was. So I would like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh three.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Do we have any citizen comment on this?
Hi, I'm Katie Christian. I'm a Director of Government and Community Relations for Duke Energy. Just, I'm here with Anne Marie, and we're here to answer any questions you have about the ordinance. I think your counsel has explained it very well, and City Manager Marshall has been great to work with through this process. We really appreciate our partnership with the city. Um, and we're always here to, to help with the city. So I think it's a good relationship. I've enjoyed working with you all, so anything, any questions you have, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you. And thank you for showing up.
You drew the short straw on where you fit in the agenda tonight, didn't you?
Couldn't just throw you in there on. It's an ordinance, we need a roll call, don't we? I almost got this thing.
Mayor.
Yeah.
You already asked for public comment.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Bloodsworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Howell?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Look, see, unanimous, that means Duke's going to give us all fifteen percent off our bill for the day.
Just not to lose power during hurricane.
Or I gave you one.
Trying here, guys, I'm trying. These are expensive. Okay, we're going to move on to new business item number six, discuss, consider and act on resolution twenty twenty-five dash H.
Mr. Mayor, this is resolution twenty twenty-five dash H, a resolution of the City of High Springs, Florida relating to the provisions of fire services, facilities and programs in the City of High Springs, Florida, describing the method of assessing fire services assessed costs against assessed property located within the City of High Springs, directing the preparation of an assessment role, authorizing a public hearing and directing the provision of notice thereof, providing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners? Appendixy kind of breaks down exactly what we're looking for in this. We're looking for an increase in residential rates to two hundred and fifty dollars per year. Uh, that's a twenty-seven percent, twenty-seven dollar increase. We're looking for a commercial to go to twenty-four cents per square foot, industrial warehouse to seven cents per square foot, and institutional to sixteen cents per square foot. Any questions?
My only question was, I remember last meeting when we were talking and I asked that question about notification of, like, there was a change in notifications of how it would go to the citizens.
Yeah, the, we, we've, we're setting a minimum and a maximum? Go ahead, Jeremy. No, we're setting a minimum and a maximum, and what that basically means is that it gives us the ability to, if we need to incrementally increase each year, we don't have to send notices each year because it's already in the ordinance, in ordinance itself.
Yeah, for, I, I still am not comfortable with that.
It still would have to be voted on at a commission meeting. Any increase would still have to be voted on at a commission meeting, and it would still have to be brought for, for public comment.
So that, so what is the actual difference of what it is now?
So, let me, let me see if I can explain this a little easier. So that, what we're presenting is an ordinance, and in this ordinance, it has two hundred and fifty for residential. I think the highest is like three twenty-eight.
Three thirty-five.
Three thirty-five. So the mechanism that Chief Peters is talking about is to pass this ordinance at two fifty, but we don't have to come with a new ordinance every time you want to raise the rate, because we got to do a fire, this fire assessment, it's nothing that we come up to with arbitrary numbers. There's a study, and it, it's defensible. So if you pass the ordinance with the minimum and maximum, we don't have to go through all the ordinance process. We would come to the commission each vote, each time we want to raise it, and you will still have a say. And the people, and the citizens get notified in their trim notices. Does that make sense?
Right, so that was, so I'm just asking for, so what is the actual difference of now with, how it is now and what is going to, like, what's the actual difference?
Currently, the, currently the fire assessment fees are two hundred and twenty-three dollars. Where we, where.
Not, not necessarily the fee.
So, um, I think I can answer this, is the study that is for the current rate was down in two thousand eight? Two thousand eight, it's supposed to be done every five years. We are at the maximum allowed because of that study. We had to do a new study, and the new study shows that this is the range that we could be in. So our, that's where it takes us from the two thirty-three to two fifty, but you have the ability. I mean, you could pass it tonight if you wanted to go three fifty-three. I, I wouldn't recommend it, but, um, is that, is that cleared up at all?
Vice Mayor, and I could be wrong. All that ordinance is changing is the, I think the only thing that's really different is the minimum and the maximum. The, the citizens are still going to be notified, I, like you said. So if we come back next year and we want to raise it another ten dollars, they still get notified. It's just the changing, the, those two amounts changing on the ordinances, or eight amounts changing on the.
Right, and what the study did, the study changed our maximum that we can collect in fire assessment fees. Prior to this new study we did in two thousand eight, when we did that study, the, the maximum was set at seven hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. That was, we were at, that was the ceiling. That's as far as we could go. Um, when we did the new study, that gave us a new top range that we can go to. And the new top range for all transparency is one point six three million. So.
So that's what I'm saying, so before we did the minimum and maximum, so we had a minimum and maximum before, right? So what we notify, so were there a difference in notification then, than this ordinance?
Don't believe so.
Okay.
What factors were put in place when the study's done? I, I was, sorry, guys, I wasn't here, so if I missed anything.
So it puts into.
Just a few, you don't have to go in detail too much, but I was just curious.
What it does, it puts into, it takes into account what types of facilities we respond to the most and proportionately divides the money up amongst the higher users of the, of the services that we provide. So we, we provide them with our run numbers, our, our run, our reports with how many calls we ran in the last year. They look at that, they look at our budget, they look at several other things to determine what the new minimum is and what the new maximum would be. So it's a comprehensive study. It took them probably two, three months to get it to us. And Accenture did all the work, so.
And I'm assuming that the new station on two thirty-five A may have some effect on this as well?
The, yeah, the, this is, this is one of the reasons also, we are currently in negotiations with, you know, Letchwood County.
So let me, let me get, because we are currently in negotiate, Chief, I'm going to stop them. We're currently in negotiations. I feel they're going very well, but yes. That does, we've already noticed, we've been, um, the fire department has kept very good track on how the call volume gets affected by that new station. So the closest unit, so if somebody's having a heart attack in Oak Ridge, that station's closer, even though it's in the city, they respond as we respond out. And we get, if we go out to the county, the county pays us for that call. We're already out and about, and the county has to come into the city, we pay them a lesser amount. So with places like Oak, for example, Oak Ridge being by that new fire station, we're already seeing a drop in calls from that. So it's going to affect the bottom line without going too far where we're at in negotiations. I don't want to give Chief Peters a leg up. That's about as much as I can say.
Yes, to your, to that point, Station twenty-one definitely is affecting our responses, so.
Which we all knew that was coming. We already been warned and told, so I was just making sure that was in along with this.
So this, this will kind of help off. So this, this will kind of help offset that.
This is, I think this is definitely overdue. I appreciate your hard work on this, too. I mean, this is something flat out, if we want the services that High Springs provides, we've got to pay for them. And this is one of the, the primary things. It is extremely expensive to fund a police department and a fire department, but everybody loves our police and our fire. And this, this is putting our money in the right place. It will cost a little bit more, about $27 more. But this is exactly where we want to be able to put it because of the, where you got ALS. We've got canines with the police. We've got our own police in schools. I mean, we've got great firefighters, great paramedics. I mean, this is exactly where we need to be spending our money. So thank you for this.
Where are we at on our new truck?
Body is, body is being, being constructed. We're waiting on parts still. We're waiting on the slide-outs and the roll-up doors. Once those are done, they tell us that it'll be about six to eight weeks to be completed, completed. So if you can know anybody in the shipping industry, they can get those things shipped to us a little faster. That'd be freak, that'd be great.
We could put our commissioner on the flap.
Call your people commissioner Bloodsworth. We could really use the help.
Well, I will say, it is cool to see the little truck running around. I was with somebody the other day and they said, well, when did we get that truck? I said, ain't had it too long, but it looks good.
It does look good.
Yeah, and it's here to stay, too, because that'll be our, that'll be our reserve truck to take over.
It's the job perfect.
Yep. Any other questions?
Not from us.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. We approve resolution 2025-8, setting the new fire assessments at the recommendation in Appendix G, and also setting a maximum.
Second.
Then properly moved to second. Do we have any citizen comment on this? It's a resolution. That's another roll call, right?
Golly, why am I hearing it? Fire knocking it out.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Bloodsworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Howell?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Mayor Grunder?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. We're moving on to citizen report and update. Oh, I'm sorry, city attorney reporting update. I almost had this thing right.
I'll be brief. I wanted to let you all know that we, Mr. Marshall and I, met with staff this afternoon to do a presentation on First Amendment auditors. We want to make sure, of course, that all citizens are being afforded their First Amendment rights when coming into public buildings. And so we were having a discussion on different types of public forums and, and permissible First Amendment rights.
Those guys love me.
We're aware.
Going to withhold on that one.
Big fans of mine. Sorry about that, guys.
One of the things that I wanted to bring up to you all that, that staff showed interest in and that I'm going to bring to you all for consideration is a policy on designating what are public versus non-public forums and within city buildings. Typically, constitutional law says, and I won't bore you too long with it, I promise, is that places wherein government business is happening behind closed doors, the day-to-day, not the decisions are being made like this, but the, the bills are being run and, and people's private information is readily accessible because that's what our staff has access to. Those aren't public forums in which folks can just come in. So one of the things I'm going to be bringing to you all for consideration is just a policy to help staff understand what they're supposed to do in those situations. We had, we had a long discussion today, not long, I promised them that it would be quick and it wasn't too bad, about taking a moment to take a breath in those situations because you never want to be the aggressor. You always want to be the level, cool head and, and try to address, you know, is it a public records request that they're in search of, or, or what can I do to help you? So I wanted to let you all know that we had that meeting today among staff. I think it was well received, and I'm going to be bringing forth a policy just for you all's consideration. You can choose to do something with it, choose not to do something with it. But I think that that's the vast majority of my update for this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
You have my city, updated city manager's report. The key thing I wanted to point out is the Priest Theater. The state architect came back to work. He had some minor changes. Nothing super concerning, couple pages that the architect needed to update and whatnot. Paul Strasting will be making those and we'll be putting out the bid. We can kind of get that, uh, Priest Theater going. The rest of it. We have a meeting Monday for the water treatment plant, meeting the engineer and walking on site to see where that's at and get you a better update for that one at the next meeting.
Fantastic. We will move on to Commissioner comments and concerns.
Me first. I just want to thank Parks and Rec. I got to go out Tuesday and play a round of disc golf. Park looks fantastic, and all the changes that is going on, the fields are getting redone. I'm really excited for what's going on out there. And just for the record, I played my first pickleball round. I'm pretty amazing, just for the record.
I will murder you.
And I kid, I kid you not, at 8:30, there must have already been 40 people there, and people were still coming up to stand in line and waiting for a court. It's absolutely unreal.
It's awesome, isn't it? It's fun, so.
I'd just like to say that in the dealings that I have with city staff and workers, and Jeremy as well, I never have a problem with you guys. I can call and get everything I need when I need it. They make it happen. I just want to recognize all our staff members.
That's a fact.
Drilling down to you, Commissioner Bloodsworth, wouldn't you know. Ms. Dre Lynn Swick is going to be retiring on July 11th, and she has been here for 23 years. She has been, in the time that I've been sitting up here, she was in the city manager's office first, and then she moved to the building department. And then the home records and finance stole her from the building department. But never, ever that I've walked into a room with Dre Lynn have I not been greeted with the warmest smile. And 23 years of service, she is the kind of employees we have here. And she is, man, I'm going to miss her. She's just a lovely creature. So Dre Lynn is going to be spending time with her grandbabies, and I understand that, but I'm going to miss her a lot. On the public records request, since you mentioned that, Madam Attorney, we, we, Angela and Jamie could probably speak to this more, but they get a lot of public records requests. And they spend an inordinate amount of time fulfilling those requests in a very, very timely manner. At what point do we trip a standard where we pay for, we, we charge people for the time that they are spending because folks know how to game that system? Well, this one only took 15 minutes, but we sent in 35 different public records requests. It only took 15 minutes.
We just had the same discussion in Newberry because they're running into a similar issue.
Right.
And the, the, it's one of those assessing your risk of, you know, and you guys, you come to the ethics presentation every year, and every year I tell you, if you're going to get jammed, you're going to get jammed on public records or sunshine law violations. Those are going to be your two biggies. And so in, in Newberry, for example, I mean, the city clerk's office was unhappy. But we did come to the conclusion that I don't know that we want to, to your point, if you take, if I make 10 public records requests, and the aggregate amount of time to fulfill those 10 requests is three hours, but they were each their own individual request that took, you know, less than 15 minutes. So I don't trip that standard. Newberry, for example, has decided that they're not going to lump them all together, even though they'd probably really like to, for fear, not, I say for fear, but out of caution of potential litigation. So I, I take your point. I would probably provide the same counsel to you of, it's, it's just ripe for litigation.
And we know we have a litigious contingent of folks here, so we don't want to set ourselves up there. I get it.
But I take your point, and it's not, unfortunately, it's not uncommon at all. Janine in the city of Newberry actually reached out to other city clerks throughout the state. And I mean, it seems to be kind of a statewide issue. And most city attorneys are in line with, with our offices, thinking, you know, everybody's different. I tell you guys all the time, attorneys make money in the gray areas. But the conservative approach here is the one that I'm going to recommend, and it's to not lump them all together and charge people.
Okay, okay. And the only other thing I have is when I met with the county commissioners earlier about the alcohol ordinance, I also was talking to them about the initiative that they have wanting to go forward to try to cite a, an extension area here for community outreach, for services for folks in the outlying areas. And I wanted to get some more information from them in terms of what their goals and objectives were. And they are very much in favor of us bringing to them what we feel our community needs. And they wanted to get some feedback from us. So I had talked to Mr. Marshall and a little bit to Danielle about, at the next meeting, I put on the agenda to have a discussion from all of the different organizations in High, in High Springs that do outreach. We've got the community outreach. I know that the Methodist Church has a pantry, I think. We've got the free food giveaway on Wednesdays, Elder Options, whatever Pastor Joy is doing, and getting all of those entities together. We're not going to be making any decisions, but the county is simply setting money aside to try to help fund that out here. But they would really like to get some, some guidance from us. So I'm hoping to get all of those entities together for that meeting just to give us some input and have us decide how, how we'd like to give input back to the county. So they had some really cool ideas, like Veterans Services coming out here. Danielle said Ask a Lawyer is available in Gainesville for people who can't afford an attorney. Just lots of different, really cool options. So that's all. Thank you.
Another option we had discussed in that same vein is to, for you all to establish a committee. You know, it takes some of the legwork off of you guys, and it gives them more time. I, I, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but Commissioner White, when we were discussing it, said, you know, they're not making, the county's not making decisions tomorrow about what they're going to do. You've got some time. So it might be fruitful to have folks in the community do outreach to people that they know and be able to provide you all with recommendations of what we would like to transmit to the county of, here's what our needs are, here's what our thoughts are, here's what support we can provide. So that's an option, too, to take a little bit of legwork off of you guys and put it into the hands of the citizens that have to conduct business here every day. So it was a thought we had discussed, and we can discuss ad nauseam at the next meeting.
Yeah, but now, speaking of that, Gainesville has this program, and I went to one of the meetings, but they used their Parks and Rec's board, and they went to different parts of Gainesville, and they had the people in that community come out, and then they talked about what they feel that community needed. And I actually talked about this one meeting, but it's been like a year ago, where like, so they, what you would do is take one commissioner and say like, Douglas Community, and then this year it would be me at Douglas, you know, Commissioner White's here, and then you rotated. That's kind of how they did it. But I have to find out what that program was called again.
A lot of cities, like Lake City, for example, does a town hall. For all, all the commissioners essentially hold their own town hall. And they're in districts, so it's a little bit different than you guys. But it allows commissioners to really sit down and hear citizens in, in a large forum. You, you know, you, you go through the whole, it's not technically a public meeting because you don't have more than one commissioner there. And then the question always pops up of what if a commissioner shows up? And I always beg you guys not to do that. But it, it's a nice outreach program, and to your point, it gives you the opportunity to talk face-to-face with folks that you may see in passing, but there may be people you never connect with. So I, you know, happy to provide any information I can on any of that stuff for you all.
I got the opportunity this week to teach a class at Legacy for their summer camp. I had seven to eight year olds. We had a time, so it was, it was really good. I, I got to teach them on improv. And speaking of that, on July the 12th, I want to invite everybody out to Legacy. I will be featured in a play that they're hosting at Legacy. It's free admission. It's at 6:30 PM. So come out, and there's plenty of seats at the Legacy Center. So please come out and support. I did have a CRA update because I didn't get a chance to do it, but CRA, we are asking everybody that's in the CRA district for Christmas to please decorate your storefront windows. We're trying to, this year theme for Christmas is Charlie Brown Christmas. So we're asking every storefront to please get involved and decorate your windows. Employee of the week this week is Marisa Sanchez. All right. She is our newest employee in the utility billing department, and she has worked very hard because we are short-staffed in that area. So she's, she came in hot. So we, she is our employee of the week.
I'll keep it very short. I just want to wish all the young ladies that are playing youth softball up in Lake City this weekend, representing High Springs in the state tournament, good luck. And I could say that I know 8U already has beaten two teams, 15 to nothing and 17 to two. And then my baby girl's playing on the 12U team, and they won, what was it, 11 to one today over a team that they would previously had lost to. So they, they're showing up, and they're showing out for High Springs. And our other girls will start tomorrow, and then we'll play through and hopefully play into Monday. So good luck to all of them, and I will entertain a motion...